Welcome all and thank you for attending our third event in this series, the People's Council. My name is Justin Michael Hendricks, the People's Mayor of Champaign-Urbana. All of the candidates in attendance tonight are for people-first policies like ending chronic homelessness, defunding the police, and closing gaps in domestic violence survivor support. When candidates like us run for office on any one of these issues, a question we get is how will you convince the other representatives to vote for that? Through this event, we are demonstrating to our communities that the political will exist. To realize all three of these people-first policies, please post your questions in the Facebook Live comment section and your questions will be fielded to the candidates present during the Q and A section. With that, I will hand it over for our land acknowledgement.
Thank you, Justin. We would like to begin today by recognizing and acknowledging that we are on the lands of the Peoria, Cascaskia, Pianca Sha, Waya, Miami, Muskutten, Odawa, Sauk, Meskwaki, Kikapu, Potawami, Ojibwe, Chickasaw, Hochunk, and the Nominie nations. These lands were the traditional territory of these native nations prior to their forced removal. These lands continue to carry the stories of these nations and their struggles for survival and identity. As residents of Urbana and Champaign and as individuals seeking elected office, we are also obligated to reflect on and actively address these histories and the related contemporary impact of dispossession and colonization. We begin with this land acknowledgement as a way to remind ourselves that the current conversations are not new. Marginalized communities have been engaging in this dialogue, creating change and uplifting their communities for millennia. We must recognize the role we play and our responsibility to center the voices of the very communities we seek to serve. We would like to thank the staff of the Native American House at the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign for their guidance drafting this statement and to name and acknowledge the leadership of Indigenous women more broadly at the university and in this community. Now to Megan for a moment of silence.
Thank you, Colin. In less than a year of the coronavirus pandemic, over 504,000 people were needlessly lost in the U.S. We in Illinois were particularly hit hard with over 20,000 people dying. It feels especially important to acknowledge all of the community members who have lost their lives in the prison industrial complex during COVID and say that we have not forgotten about them either. Please join us in a brief moment of silence. Alright, thank you, everyone. Justin, let's go to the roll call.
Thank you, Megan. When I call your name in office that you're running for, please respond with "here." Christopher Hansen, candidate for War II of Urbana.
Here.
Colin Dodson, candidate for War II of Urbana.
Here.
Deborah Lu, candidate for War III of Urbana. Megan McDonald, candidate for War V of Urbana.
Here.
Grace Wilkin, candidate for Ward VI of Urbana.
Here.
Andy Ma, candidate for Mayor of Urbana.
Here.
Rita Connerly, candidate for Township Supervisor of Champaign.
Here.
Clarissa Nickerson Foreman, incumbent and candidate for District 1 of Champaign.
Here.
And I am Justin Michael Hendricks, candidate for District 3 of Champaign. Now we'll look at the sample legislation. Before we start, tonight's topic focuses on domestic violence, which may be triggering for some viewers and participants. While we try our best to avoid graphic details, there may be some things that are upsetting due to the nature of tonight's topic. We believe that as difficult as these conversations are, it's important to address this issue and facilitate open conversation. And now for the sample legislation. Whereas nationally, 1 in 3 women and 1 in 4 men have experienced some form of domestic violence in their lifetime. And whereas women, particularly Black, Indigenous, and people of color, are disproportionately impacted by domestic violence and the long-term adverse physical and mental health consequences. And whereas many cases of domestic violence are reported to friends or family, yet only 21% of female victims and 6% of male victims disclosed their victimization to a doctor or nurse at some point in their lifetime. And most cases of domestic violence goes unreported to the police. And whereas Champaign County, as of 2015, has the fourth highest rate of domestic crime in the state of Illinois, more than double the state average. And with 2,800 calls per year related to domestic violence, reportedly, the police's number-one call for service. And whereas 22% of community members over the age of 18 and experiencing homelessness in 2018 self-identified as survivors of domestic violence. And whereas state law requires a tenant who is a domestic violence survivor to wait 48 hours to change locks unless the landlord provides permission. And whereas crucial shelter services such as Courage Connection are available to domestic violence survivors who meet the definition of fleeing domestic violence. And before it therefore resolved, be it therefore resolved, excuse me, we support increasing the accessibility of domestic abuse survivor services and expanding protections for domestic abuse survivors. Now on to our candidate comments. Because there are so many of us and because we are inviting the community to participate in a 13-minute Q and A, each candidate will have 2 minutes to speak about the resolution, the community feedback they've gotten, and anything else they want to say about closing gaps in domestic violence survivor support. First, Christopher Hansen, candidate for War II of Urbana.
Good evening. I'm kind of glad that I'm going first because this is definitely not a subject that I consider myself to be an expert on. And I think some of the other people here are going to be much more informative voices than my own. But I'll try to say some things that I think are useful. And one of the first things that comes to mind is that it doesn't seem like politicians like talking about this issue. And that there's a serious, serious stigma problem related to domestic violence that may need to be solved for real progress to be made at a governmental level. And you know, maybe we're solving it by having meetings just like this. So that stigma issue is very concerning. And it also maybe starts to explain why we see such significant underreporting of this. And my immediate inclination is to talk about the police and the hesitancy for people to want to call the police for the issue when they clearly don't know how to handle it. And even the police themselves say that they're not trained to do this kind of thing. So there's no question about that. So I mean, it seems to me that, and I think everyone else is probably going to mirror this, is the police need to get out of this as much as possible. And my concern is that a push to do that just results in something that looks exactly like the police that is just rebranded. And I think that's not what is going to help. And so someone pointed out to me earlier today, because I was asking them about domestic violence, that they noticed that there didn't seem to be much of anything in the new front door program that seemed to address domestic violence. And that hadn't happened to me before. So I guess the next thing I'll say is I think bringing the right voices forward is extremely important. And I kind of know that's not really my voice, but that's going to be one of the most important things we do is bring the voices forward to talk about this.
Thank you, Christopher Hansen. Next, we have Colin Dodson, candidate for War II of Urbana.
Hi, thank you. Again, I'm really not the most qualified person to speak here, but what I can say is that there's a reason for the choice of the 3 topics that we're discussing as part of the People's City Council, which is to say that issues of housing justice, of criminal injustice in this country, and providing the support necessary to survivors of domestic violence and abuse are deeply interconnected issues. You know, for one thing, the lack of guaranteed stable housing for all people is a major contributor to the prevalence of domestic violence and is a huge reason why so many people are not able to leave abusive situations like that. And fundamentally, you know, we're talking about, you know, when we look at the action, the conclusion of the resolution, you know, you may notice that there's not a specific singular policy that we're pushing for. And I think that that's appropriate. But we need to remember that this is a long-term commitment that in order to really address domestic violence, that requires a very deep, ongoing work within the community. And it's not just one thing that's going to solve domestic violence as an issue in our community. You know, we need to first of all ensure that survivors can get to safety, right? And then beyond that, we have to start looking at why it is that abuse and predation and violence is reproduced time and time again in our society. So ultimately, we need a social transformation or reconstruction. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin Dodson. Unfortunately today, Deborah Lu is not with us today. However, we do have a statement that she has provided in result of this situation that we're discussing.
Does someone want to read Deborah's statement? If not, I can do it. Somebody wants to send it to me?
I do apologize. I have her statement. So this is from Deborah Lu. Domestic violence is intractably tied to the issues of economic and housing insecurity. Individuals who are trapped in abusive relationships often do so out of economic they feel they have nowhere else to go. In these three-part series, we have seen how the issues are all related. A victim of domestic violence will be trapped if they are otherwise housing insecure. And they are among the populations most likely to have dangerous encounters with the police. An equitable society by definition must protect and provide opportunity for the most vulnerable, including victims of domestic violence. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita Connerly, reading that for Deborah Lu, candidate for Ward III of Urbana. Next, we have Megan McDonald, candidate for Ward V of Urbana.
Thanks, Justin. Hi, y'all. It's nice to see you again for this People's City Council forum. My name is Megan McDonald and I'm running for Urbana City Council, Ward V. Just a reminder, thanks to you and the audience for attending. And to you all here, I'm proud of us for getting through it and all agreeing that ending chronic homelessness, defunding the police, and looking to provide domestic violence survivor support are all ideas that we support as candidates. I want to thank Courage Connection for providing us with materials, both in English and Spanish. I want to thank the press for showing up and helping amplify this message. I want to start out by saying that domestic violence is a crisis. Domestic violence is defined by Courage Connections as a pattern of coercive control that one person exercises over another. On their website, they list types of abuse. Physical abuse, sexual abuse, emotional abuse, and economic abuse are just the top 4, which I thought was interesting to note. Get back to my statement. It's a mental health crisis, it's a public health crisis. The police are called to a domestic dispute almost every day in Urbana just by a look at the recent media reports on the city government's website. More often than not, it's because of rent money. Domestic violence is on the rise because of the pandemic. People being isolated with their partners or roommates or parents, it's on the rise because people cannot meet their basic needs. It's on the rise because people are unacceptable for who they are and have nowhere else to go. I hope that even, you know, to mimic what Chris said, that even just having this conversation today helps some people. Because while this is a mock event for candidates and for you all in the audience to get to know us a little bit more, I do believe that this is what the government should do with our tax dollars, help people be connected to resources as quickly and often as possible. I know I'm running out of time. I think amplifying this in people's first policies like public housing, defunding the police, we could put money towards people's actual needs, food, housing, mental health services. If we funded those needs, I bet we would get less calls to the police. And I think that we should have a separate number for domestic violence situations. And I'll end there.
Thank you, Megan McDonald. Next, we have Grace Wilkin, candidate for Ward VI of Urbana.
Thank you, Justin, and thank you, everyone watching and commenting. This is a very difficult and very important issue to address. Domestic violence, for me, boils down to an unsafe home. And that makes people extremely vulnerable to physical, mental, and emotional harm. I think that we need education to prevent domestic violence, education about consent, healthy versus unhealthy relationships, how to express and deal with emotions. While I was at Central High School as a student, I attended a workshop on healthy versus abusive relationships, mostly just to get out of class at the time. But it turned out to be really enlightening and I realized that I hadn't really learned about or experienced many healthy relationships and what that really looks like. I think we also need education and job training and job access for everyone, but especially women and especially women of color. People, often women, are forced to stay in unhealthy, sometimes dangerous, relationships because of economic dependence, as people have brought up, with the only alternative being to face homelessness or housing instability a lot of the times. I think that we need to reduce the barriers to housing, education, and career opportunities like cost, childcare, safety, mental health services, transportation, and all the other things that could be a barrier. I think that we also need to address how we respond to domestic violence. It's the number-one call for police in Champaign-Urbana. And it's often re-traumatizing and only a reactionary system. It doesn't prevent domestic violence. And there's so many instances where people who need help don't feel safe to call the police. People of color, people with mental challenges, people without legal status, people who identify as LGBTQ, or for any other number of reasons. I think there's other examples of places where they've replaced or supplemented police with social workers or other professionals to respond to domestic violence. And I think that we need to look into that to address it on a systemic level. And when we break down the silence and the stigma around domestic violence to acknowledge when it happens and address it in a meaningful way that's not re-traumatizing and helps to heal all parties to avoid it from happening again. So I think this resolution is a good small step for us saying that we're committed towards working on this issue of domestic violence in our community.
Thank you, Grace Wilkin. Next, we have Andy Ma, candidate for Mayor of Urbana.
Hello, everybody. Domestic violence is a major issue in our community. And the local government has not been taking it seriously. I think there's much we can do to listen to the perspectives of survivors and provide the resources that they need. And I think that this conference is a step in the right direction showing that we do take domestic violence seriously and will do all we can to help survivors.
Thank you, Andy Ma. Next, we have Rita Connerly, candidate for Township Supervisor of Champaign.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you all for participating in this very important topic. It is a very sensitive issue. And as a person who has firsthand experienced domestic violence, I am so happy that we are here as a panel and progressives who are interested in becoming a part of our city governments so that we can take some lead and action as it relates to domestic violence victims, survivors, and the supports therefore for them. Domestic violence is the number-one call received here in Champaign-Urbana. Nationally, 1 in 4 homeless women, or victims, excuse me, are homeless due to domestic violence against them. So now is the ideal time to form positive relationships that we can show and share to others. Domestic violence also referred to oftentimes as intimate partner violence, dating abuse, or relationship abuse as a pattern of behaviors used by one partner to maintain power and control over another. So I think one of the first things that we need to do is understand what domestic violence is. Domestic violence doesn't discriminate. Anyone of any race, gender, sexuality, religion, educational level, or economic status can be a victim or a perpetrator. Understanding domestic violence means that there's also levels to it. It doesn't necessarily mean physical harm. It also means intimidation, manipulation, control of a partner, or otherwise forcing them to behave in ways in which we want them to or the perpetrator wants them to. This includes through ways of physical violence, threats, emotional abuse, financial control, and other forms of control. So I think one of the first things that we as a community can do is support victims in their abuse and making sure that they know help is available to them. Recognizing abuse is the first step and also one of the hardest. Again, as a person who was in a domestic violence situation for a decade of my life, I didn't realize how bad it was on the inside. And you don't realize it. You learn more about power and control in abusive relationships as an outsider. So I could identify in friendships, relationships, bad relationships or bad behaviors. But yet in my own, that was something that was difficult for me to recognize. And I think that recognizing is one of the first things. And how we can do that is we can start educating a little bit earlier and fostering healthy relationships. I recall when my eldest son was in high school, he partook in a program called Care for You, which fostered healthy relationships. Because we often find, like I stated, domestic abuse doesn't discriminate, and it's starting younger. I just would encourage that as we continue to delve on this conversation that we not only think about the victims and the perpetrators, but we extend that into the families. As a result of domestic violence, my children were byproducts. And while I did go through the courts and, you know, through the proper procedures in order to provide protections for myself, I used the resources that were available to me by my family and by my friends. I didn't know of our domestic violence house here. And when I did reach out, they were to capacity. So there was not even an option for help for me there. I also reached out to school services and social services agencies, which again redirected me to the Courage Connection Center here. And again, it was just like going into a brick wall. There was no support services. So I think, again, as we continue to talk about domestic violence, we need to consider the children, the families, the friends that are also impacted. Because domestic violence, the physical component is typically the last component of the abuse. So I'm happy to continue to discuss this topic with panelists who are just as excited to learn more on how we can solve or at least try to solve the issues with it. But police as a solution, that's not going to solve domestic violence. It only contributes to additional trauma. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita Connerly. Next, we have Clarissa Nickerson Foreman, incumbent and candidate for District 1 of Champaign.
I want to start just by saying, you know, I don't have all the answers and I don't pretend to, but I do think that domestic violence is a huge problem. I know that I like to talk facts. I enjoy facts. I think facts is the best way to talk about things. By facts, I mean the number-one call for service in the city of Champaign is domestic violence. The number-one call for service in Garden Hills is domestic violence. So we know that police are being called to these homes, but we don't necessarily know the outcome. You know, are these families put with services? Are the women, you know, given opportunities for self-sufficiency? Or is always the option, let me put you in a shelter. Let me move you from where you are and put you somewhere else. And so I think that when we talk about it in that way, it makes you wonder, you know, what else can we do so that that experience, potentially leaving somewhere difficult, is easier for women and seeking help? Because I recall we had a city council call a couple of weeks ago where someone got on and they made a joke or a jab saying, well, you know, how dare you call the police about a man jumping on you and then be talking about defunding the police? You can seek help for domestic violence and still be against the police. And I did not like that and that was something that rubbed me the wrong way because we have lost a Black woman, several Black women, to domestic violence recently. And the pain that people that are left behind feel they didn't do enough or they could have did more, I just want that to be, you know, people to understand that's real. And, you know, everybody would tell you they would do something differently if. But what can we do as a community to educate that seeking help is good? It's good to seek help and it's good to embrace people who seek help. And one thing I would like to address that really concerns me, especially when we talk about women and seeking out orders of protection, there is some type of stigma about seeking order protection. Or, you know, the main thing that concerns me is if you seek order protection, it's there publicly. So even if I'm trying to hide from my abuser, everybody knows that I'm trying to hide from my abuser. And that's concerning and I think that's something, you know, if we're going to talk about change of policy or something, let's change some policy to give some people some privacy as they seek help. You know, so again, I don't have all the answers, but those are some suggestions, I think, that would be good to, you know, put out. And I would love to hear what everybody has to say. I know that a lot of people are uncomfortable with it, but I'm glad you all came to the table to talk about it. So I appreciate you all.
Thank you, Clarissa Nickerson Foreman. I am Justin Michael Hendricks, your right-in candidate for District 3 of Champaign. First and foremost, I want to thank everyone for being here in this space. I know in these matters, when it's coming to moments of triggering situations and trying times and knowing that the territories that we are entering and engaging in, we know that it's always good to take knowledge and also be accepting to the situations and have compassion and to knowing that these are situations that we cannot trade lightly with. These are things that we must take with great cause and great impact and knowing that things must change. And like Clarissa and everyone else is working off, we work off facts and truth. With that being said, 54% of trans, Black trans women experience some form of intimate partner violence. That includes being coerced or pushed or even shoved into having sexual intercourse and then resulting in domestic violence. We know that 40% of Black women experience domestic violence in a lifetime. So that means even in Champaign currently, we recently had the unfortunate passing and murder of Tanisha Jenkins. We need to start establishing legislation that's protecting women, such as the Tanisha Jenkins Act, Safety Protections Act for women, especially Black women when it comes to domestic violence. Because I'm pretty sure most of those calls are from Black women. Also, we know that 26% of Black gay men and 37.3% of Black bisexual men also experience domestic partner violence as well. Also, we know that 27% of disabled people also are experiencing domestic violence as well in their relationships, whether it's a caretaker or intimate partner. So we also have to be mindful of those situations too when we're reaching out to these demographics. Another thing, 56% of young people, that means between the ages of 15 and 18, are experiencing domestic violence in their relationships too. So that means that these things are triggering down through generations, through families, through friends. We have to start having the conversations and changing things up, making sure that we're implementing things to change, protecting people at all times, and make sure domestic violence doesn't exist anymore. I'm Justin Michael Hendricks. I thank you all. And now as we move forward, thank you all. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Next, we will have the candidate vote, starting with Christopher Hansen, candidate for War II of Urbana.
Yes.
Colin Dodson, candidate for War II of Urbana.
Yes.
Megan McDonald, candidate for Ward V of Urbana.
Yes.
Yes.
Grace Wilkins, candidate for Ward VI of Urbana.
Yes.
Andy Ma, candidate for Mayor of Urbana.
Yes.
Rita Connolly, candidate, candidate for Township Supervisor of Champaign.
Yes.
Clarissa Nickerson Foreman, incumbent and candidate for District One of Champaign.
Yes.
And I am Justin Michael Hendricks, your right in candidate for District Three of Champaign, and I am a yes. Next, we have our Q and A section. We are taking questions live from the chat box during this session and series, and we welcome you all to please comment and ask questions. And we will make sure that we fill them to everyone so they can answer them.
Don't think there are any questions yet, which is fine. Oh, maybe Chris has one.
Go ahead, Chris.
So, something that I, I've been thinking about a lot is, is how to bring traumatized voices where they need to be. Um, which is to, I guess policymakers or people who are going to um, do something about it. And I don't ha- have an answer to that question, so maybe, maybe you guys can give me a response. When someone's traumatized, they're almost by definition debilitated in some way and um, their ability to function, you know, e- especially in like a, a technical government kind of setting is severely dimin- diminished because they're traumatized. Um, so what, I, I'm asking you, uh, what, what kind of response do you have for that? How do you, how do we bring a traumatized voice forward so that the right people hear the right things?
Um, I think one of the biggest things, Chris, just to kind of get, just to kick it off for everybody else, I think a really big thing is going to be people being able to be in those spaces to do it. And I think that there is, there's a huge stigma in going back, right? So say I called and I tried to get help and I, I went back. I have six kids, right? So if you go back, then there's the stigma of, well, I went back and how do I, how do I tell people that I'm, I'm strong because I know I need to leave, but I'm weak in, you know? So if you can't tell that to your family and friends, I don't know how you can, you know, tell that to legislators. Mostly because pa- patriarchy, I hate that word, but um, I think you guys know what I mean. But our laws tell us how we feel about women. And, you know, the way we, you know, the way we, we don't do anything about rape cases, the way we, you know, there's a guy who raped a girl in the back alley and got three months, you know, uh, probation suspended, right? Because he, you know, her legs weren't closed, you know? The conversations that men have like that, devaluing women, so domestic violence isn't taken seriously. And I think that, you know, it's going to take more women in spaces who are willing to listen. Because I think trauma, and I think, I think pretty much anybody in here can understand, a person who, you know, is scared of court, isn't going to go to a courthouse, right? So how do you, you know, make more Courage Connections? How do we s- make more rape crisis centers, right? Because those people are trained to deal with them, and a lot of people don't realize, we had a really amazing rape crisis uh, women ac- advocacy group over on uh, Ray Street in Urbana. No, that's not the right street, wait a minute. The one that runs by the courthouse. I don't go over there enough, I'm sorry, y'all. I want to say Main Street. But um, it was on the left-hand side and it closed a few years ago, and that, the rem- the ramifications of that, most people haven't realized, but Courage Connection is overloaded. And so, you know, getting more, getting the legislatures and people who write the checks to see the value in in healing women, if that makes any sense. Did anybody, does anybody follow me here? Okay, I hope I'm not going too far, but I hope I answered your question, Chris, or at least got you, got your brain thinking a little bit, you know?
If then, there are two, oh, sorry Rita, go ahead.
No, you can go ahead, Colin.
Okay, um, so there are two things that kind of come to mind, which is that um, so one is going back to a point you raised earlier, Chris, about like ending stigma, and that is important, but it's not just stigma. There's also legitimate fear that, you know, when you come forward and challenge someone who has shown a capacity to inflict harm, there is a very real fear of retribution, that if the effort to address that harm fails, that that harm will escalate, right? Um, or even that the, the people that you're going to, that you feel should be trying to help you, that they may harm you in some way, right? And that happens all the time in, you know, in our, uh, the systems around us. The, the other like huge point, I think, uh, that will require a cultural shift is I, I really think that we need to de-emphasize, you know, a personal moral understanding of it, all these kinds of issues to, to recognize structural and systemic roots. And what I mean by that is, you know, under no circumstances should anyone ever be um, you know, faulted for suffering abuse, right? And a big part of why, you know, there's, there's this like victim blaming and like flipping the narrative and gaslighting and all of this, is that so much of our moral fabric and, and philosophy in the society that we live in is based on construing every problem in the world as an individual, personal, moral problem. That, you know, that in some way, if you weren't able to get out of a situation, well, you weren't good enough, that's your fault, blah, 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 blah. Um, when, no, that's, that's not it. Like un- underneath all sorts of different, you know, the ways that people think don't come out of nowhere. They come out of the conditions that we exist in. You know, the, the fact that abusive behavior tends to reproduce itself, generation to generation, if the cycle is not broken. It can be broken, but without intervention, you know, people especially like as children who grow up in abusive situations are more likely to be involved either as, you know, a perpetrator or a victim when they grow up. That requires that intervention to cut off that cycle. But it's not just, you know, within families, it's the entire structure of the society that we live in rewards predators. It rewards abusers, maybe not in the strictest sense that we're talking about with domestic violence, but when we're talking about exploitation, it definitely does. You know, um, that huge companies get massive tax breaks all the while, sometimes literally throwing their workers under buses. That's an exaggeration, I guess, so not literally, but my point is that there are all of these abuses that are, are regularized and normalized, and in fact, are treated as grounds for preates. We need to flip that script. We need to change the way that we value, you know, that we understand the world and that we value, you know, moral and ethical qualities. And I'm sorry, I'm rambling on and on and on, but that, that's kind of where I would come from, is that we need to change the orientation of the conversation so that we're not talking about personal moral failings, but how to actually change the systems, you know? I mean, first, we have to have the conversation about like, how do we get someone to safety? That has to happen immediately, right now. But as soon as we have time to breathe, we need to talk about how do we change the culture? How do we change the economic system, the social system? How do we change the world, frankly?
Well, the other thing that I was going to add, and I think you guys added some beautiful points there, but I think, Chris, to answer your um, question a little bit more directly, how do we get those who have been traumatized to basically speak about their trauma? Um, one of the things that I think is important is we get people in spaces that can relate to the trauma in which they've experienced. And what I mean by that is not only can they relate by the experience, but they also are similar in what they look like. So they are reflecting with someone who looks like them, who has shared experiences them. Because for me personally, with sharing my story, it became more easier as I be, as I began to share it. The initial coming out, it was very difficult in that I was embarrassed, I was ashamed, and I did not want to be looked at as um, a victim. And I'll just, I mean, just to be all honest, I did not want to be, I didn't want to appear weak. And then additionally, with being a parent, I didn't want to share my trauma because of the fear and the distrust with our um, social service agencies. So being that I have been physically in an abusive relationship, I know that my children have witnessed physical abuse. My fear was that I was not going to receive support services to help me, but rather maybe services that would take my children away from me? Maybe services that would not benefit me overall nor my family. So I think that i- it's important that we, you know, reassure people that the help is there for them and that, that the help is not in any way to condemn, condemn them, but at a um, a session that I went to on Tuesday, Justin hosting My Mental Health Matters, one of the things that I took away from that is accepting people where they are, not forcing them, you know, to share any more with you or with anyone than what they want to, and just being open and receptive to whatever that share is. And asking them what their needs are versus assuming we have the answers for what the need is. Um, so again, just getting more people who have lived experiences, who are relatable, who look like the, the victims that are um, you know, that are being exposed to domestic violence. And then again, reaching out and providing wraparound services, not only to the victim, but to the families, and I'll even extend it a little further to you, to the perpetrators. Because in my mind, perpetrators are dealing with adverse childhood trauma that they've never had addressed. Because, you know, if it, it, and again, just from my personal experiences, there's never been, there's never been anything other than a restraining order that prevents my perpetrator from staying away from me. What about the mental health that he's dealing with? And I'm compassionate enough to consider that, that he is dealing with some adverse childhood traumas that just have never been addressed. So I think just having that open conversation and being able to accept people where they are with non-judgments um, and relatable and lived experiences, and creating those warm welcoming spaces for our, uh, you know, as services for our survivors and thinking of them as survivors and not victims. So again, I don't have all the answers. I think a lot of things have been highlighted here that we can definitely seek to try to make some improvements. But it's, uh, it's every, everyone in, you know, they have different needs. Everyone has different needs. And I think we need to keep that in mind too, that what worked for me, it may not work for Megan. And what works for Megan may not work for, you know, for Justin or whatever the case may be, but just being open um, to hearing and listening. I think that's why we have two ears, to listen more than what we speak. And asking and being direct in our ask as far as what the needs are, what, what does the survivor want? What, 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 what do they need to be more self-sustaining? So that's just my little two cents. Thank you.
If I can jump in one second, I'm sorry, Grace. Um, I'm going to go ahead and address the question that Sherry had asked about um, verbal abuse, especially during city council meetings. We do understand that you are focused on an isolated situation, but respectfully, we're talking about a reoccurring situation that's happening in communities across Champaign, Urbana. Considering the, the compassion that we are having for black and brown women in this situation. However, your isolated question, we will not address moving forward. However, we thank you for your viewership. Grace, you are next.
I'm sorry, Grace, before you start, we referenced the death of a woman who died and her death was within the last year, and the anniversary of that death is coming up. That is still raw in our community. It's still happened. It's still something we're grappling with. And so I am very offended by comparing this woman's d- death and the death and the people we've lost to something petty, and your white fragility is showing. Ain't nobody else going to say it, but I'm going to tell you. It's not going to work here with me, and that's just me, so we can move on. Sorry about that, Grace. Go ahead.
Totally fine. I was going to go back to Christopher's uh, question unless anybody had anything else to add. See, the question was how do we get voices and policy in other places, people who have survived these kinds of things or can relate to that kind of trauma? And it's a good question. It is a really hard one. I can't say I have, you know, a good answer to it or that there is any one answer. Um, but I think it's really hard when there's a whole system in society that doesn't take something seriously. A lot of victims of domestic violence and especially child sexual abuse are gaslit and silenced on an entire societal and personal level. And so it's really hard for someone to think that they would want to share that again when it hasn't been taken seriously for so long. So it is a really big concern. Um, and it's extremely difficult to talk about those kinds of things with anyone, but let alone a whole group setting or in a public uh, city council meeting or in a court hearing, any of that kind of intimidating setting. It's extremely difficult. Um, so I think it's a good question, and I think that we need to meet people where they are, you know, as Rita said. And also somewhat um, physically, literally too, like at some of these crisis centers, if people wanted to share their experience, um, I think a key thing too would having be an option for anonymous comments and pre-written comments so that people can choose how they want to kind of set their own boundaries and maybe not address questions, not see people's faces when they share their story, whatever it is. Um, and some anonymity to it too. I think that would be a really key way to get these voices in because it's a terrible thing and not something that I would really want to ever ask someone to do, you know, like come to city council, share your traumatizing experience with us. I mean, if they're willing to, absolutely, but um, I think a lot of people may not. So I think having some pre-written and anonymous comments too might be a good way to catch some of those. I had another comment too, if there was another question. Um, our topic kind of about um, there are a few specific instances that I won't get into, but of um, people who have a history of child sexual abuse working in our public and private schools in the community. And it often goes under the rug, or people um, rationalize it by this person was a good person, so I don't think that could have happened, you know, this person didn't do that to me, so that means they wouldn't have do that to someone else. And just a lot of ridiculous things on kind of a whole systemic level, like teachers and staff writing letters of support for people who um, you know, very blatantly victimized their students in a position of power. And so I think that, yeah, that's a big thing. It's just as a society, we gaslight so many people and especially young people and underage and people who don't feel like they have power, they're in a manipulative situation. That's a huge thing. So I think just acknowledging it and being open to that kind of possibility and not jumping in our own assumptions is another really helpful thing.
I have a question to ask for the, the council. When it comes to domestic survivor support, do you believe that it is best to, for example, if you were having like police on, on, on scene or, or it's a crisis, do you prefer for someone that's been through domestic violence to, to be like the person to help you, for as like example, you go to a council, you prefer for your council, for my example, I prefer my council to be either black or queer? So when it comes to those, those situations, is it correct to have those people who've been through these situations to assert, to assert the situation opposed to policing it so heavily? And people who haven't been through these situations to where there's less compassion, less intellect, less knowledge for even the person, the perpetrator, even the family?
I'll somewhat, I mean, try to address that. Um, as a person who has needed the police during a domestic violence i- i- incident and not feeling protected, um, I don't think that the police contributed any other way but adding more trauma, adding more harm, adding more headache, heartache, um, creating more distrust, um, not alleviating the situation. Instead of treating me as a survivor, they treated me as the vic- or um, as the person who committed a crime. Um, and I'll just be just ch- just clear with you all, I called the police because my perpetrator came to my house, not with even, not even after a month after having a order of protection. Um, I was actually inque- uh, I was, I was warned that he had called to inquire on whether or not his domestic or uh, the order protection had expired. The sheriff's office, I happen to know someone there who thought it was suspicious, that was a flag for them. They contacted me and it just reignited all the fears and the reasons why I initially got the order of protection in the first place. When he came to my house, I immediately called the police. When the police came, they engaged with my perpetrator first. When the police engaged with me, it was a question on did I want a gift that the perpetrator was giving me? Not how can I help you, not, they're not protecting and serving. Um, ultimately, I ended up calling in to try to make a, another police report. And that police officer told me, and Clarissa, I'm glad that you brought this up, but the police officer basically told me, because I have taken a stance in stating, um, you know, to defund the police, that they understand what my stance is with them. So as a survivor, it left me unsure as far as where to go, who to call. So as a survivor, it left me unsure as far as where to go, who to call, who to trust. Um, and so I just don't believe when it comes to domestic violence situations that our police need to have any any hands in because they are not properly trained to deal with that. I hope that answered your question some, Justin. I just wanted to be kind of clear on my personal situation with police um and them policing domestic violence situations um inappropriately and just not knowing how to deal with them. Uh, and so I think that that's when it's, there's a a need, especially with us knowing that this is a number one call. But there is a need for more of the organizations such as Courage Connection. We have one space here that is supposed to serve the number one call um of a a victimization here in Champaign-Urbana and it, the numbers just don't add up. So I mean, so that's just what I have to say as it relates.
Also, wanna point out that among uh perpetrators of domestic violence, police are overwhelmingly overrepresented. Um, that, you know, if your partner is a police officer, you are exceptionally more likely to experience domestic violence at the hands of that person. Um, and, you know, beyond that, you know, I would say that like the most important thing is empathy and a trauma-informed approach. So from that perspective, whoever is responding to an incident of domestic violence will be better equipped if they have some personal experience there. Uh, but more than anything, I think, you know, a solid emotional intelligence and um you know, a trauma-informed understanding that is, you know, how trauma moves and functions and, you know, how healing actually happens. Um, you know, having that and the interpersonal empathy are the most important components, I think, in order for someone to, you know, to feel safe and legitimately like to be safe.
I'd like to speak a little comment. Um, I think Grace brought up a good point um earlier about early education about this stuff. And so that maybe we don't have to um grow into adults that don't know the signs of abuse in relationships and working environments, so that maybe we can live in an environment where we don't have to call anybody, you know, like hopefully we're obviously gonna have to come up with a new system that isn't police for domestic violence. And I think Justin's question of should those people be survivors or trauma-informed people themselves? Um, and uh that that really comes up to like if those survivors, you know, stand up and decide they wanna do that. And I think we're seeing that in our community, you know, right here with people like Rita, um, other people in this room, other people that have shown up to city council meetings that are survivors that are trying to have their voices heard and then are, you know, essentially, you know, being policed in their tone of how they should approach the council and how they should manage their emotions and stuff like that. And so I think realizing that when people come to the table, they have all these experiences behind them and that we should be, you know, if if any of us make it onto the council, we should be empathetic to that. And I guess that's just the point that I wanna make. And then if we can make legislation um to somehow change education curriculum, I think that would really help a lot of people. Um, I think if we're gonna educate kids on sexual health, on um you know, science and everything else, like why are we not, you know, informing them about something that could essentially save their life? So anyway, I just wanted to bring up those comments.
Um, Megan, I just wanna, I kinda wanna piggyback on what you stated, and I think that it is important to um to educate early. And so Grace, thanks for bringing that point up, too, because if we're not identifying, if we're not teaching our kids what love, what healthy relationships look like, what loving relationships look like, how can we expect them as adults to identify toxic relationships or relationships that are not beneficial or good for them? Um, so I I thought that that was brilliant, and I believe in early education, so from cradle, um, you know, from birth. As far as teaching our kids what healthy relationships look like. And I think that also goes into teaching our parents what that looks like and how to love um effectively and appropriately. And oftentimes, and unfortunately, it happens when you have children. That's when you try at least to do, to be more intentional on having effective relationship, healthy relationship, loving relationship. So if we can start to identify and acknowledge and 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 just not necessarily accept by identify them as toxic relationships, then I think that's the first step. Acknowledging is the first step in any addiction. And just like any other addiction, abuse is one of those cycles. And so I thought you you both brought two valid points in making sure that we're educating early on healthy relationships so that we can identify them as adults.
And that reminds me of just listening to what Rita just said, when you mentioned the children in the family. Um, it is important that we provide services for for the for the children and the and the families, because as we all, we have youth when these things happen. Police sometimes come in the situation wanting to investigate and interrogate the youth. And that may cause early traumas, among other things that we're dealing with being black in the community and then having a family situation, among other disparities, and then socioeconomics that play in the hand. And then you have to then suffer with domestic violence in the family. And just being a young person and growing up, and you have to see the experience between two two parents or or your mother and their partner having physical domestic violence interventions. Uh, you wanna just make sure that the family's okay and the children are protected and they understand that them, that they two are safe and that they are, that they are able to express how they how they feel and with their worries and their concerns, because sometimes we do take the children out of the situation, not take them into consideration. But we also should communicate with the children as well, because they too are affected by domestic violence. So that's another thing I think that is also important and just listening to stories from people like Rita and just knowing the situations and how she's explaining situations and knowing how she has children and just knowing how she's very protective of them, but yes, she wants them to communicate with her. And um I applaud her for that because she wants her children to be aware that they know that what's going on and that these things do happen, but no, you are going to be safe, you will be protected. So I wanna make sure that we start encouraging protection and um and services for the children as well to make sure they have outlets to to uh communicate and give and give their thoughts and opinions on things as well.
I wanna add one more comment, too. I guess it goes back to Chris's first question about like, how do we get survivors to speak up and just to address that, like the stigma of not being believed, you know, and not being um yeah, not being believed, uh, not thinking that you're like a good, you know, like if I come forward with this abuse that I've endured, people are either going to try to discredit me or not believe me or ask me, why didn't I leave or what did I do to deserve it? All this stuff. So it's just, we need to change the culture around that, I think, um, which is not gonna happen overnight and it's not gonna happen, um you know, anytime quickly, but I think yeah, just realizing that there's no perfect victim and there's no perfect perpetrator and um extending that compassion to everybody is is something that we can try to do as a community. And um if we, if any of us make it onto our, into our elected positions, then, you know, carry it into there. So that's that's all I wanted to end. And I think we're almost at time, but if anybody else has stuff to say, or if we wanna keep going, we could vote on to keep going. Yeah, Grace.
Oh, I had another comment tied into that. I think that is a good point to not, you know, demonize people on any end. Um, and a lot of my experiences have been with people with mental challenges and, you know, diagnosed conditions, and I have no confidence that the police wouldn't harm that person um and make the situation even worse. So um a lot of these people in my life who are prone to violent outbursts, uh, I just end up dealing with them on my own, you know, my family and I, like with our bodies as barriers, because we have absolutely no confidence that if we called the police, they wouldn't injure or shoot that person on the spot. You know, someone that we love who's just having a violent outburst, cuz that's a condition of their way of being. Um, or to that they might arrest or criminalize that person as a manifestation of their disability. And um also in the schools, we have had something in Champaign schools where police, you know, including the SRO, like anyway escalated to pressing charges on a young black student who received special ed services with diagnosed disability for having a violent outburst at school, when lots of white students with disabilities have the same outbursts and don't have that same reaction. So I think especially with mental health comes a lot into it, because if you see someone having a violent outburst, it you just never know exactly what it's about, you know? That was all.
I would, I would like to throw out another question if there's time. Do we have time for that? Okay, um, so I'm appreciative of of some of the things that Colin said about, you know, um this not being an in- an individualized problem and there are some overarching things to deal with. Uh, certainly, that's the case. And uh I'm also appreciative of of Rita's comment that um, you know, there, it's not just, i- if there's an incident between, let's say, two people. It's not just one or the other person who may need some kind of help or attention. It's very likely both. Um, it may be completely unclear which person is the, let's say, victim or let's say abuser. Um, and and so, you know, oftentimes both people need help. And so kind of my question for the panel is, what, I mean, given that we know to at least for now, right now, there is some individualized need for some type of attention from s- someone. Um, and I think we agree that someone is not the police. Um, my question is, given any amount of resources you want, what what might that look like? What, what do you, so the, what someone, someone proposed to me um in the last day or two was, you know, a completely separate, they called it a task force. I don't know if I like that word, but for domestic violence, a completely separate response team and someone else tonight at our at our panel meeting mentioned, you know, having a having a completely different phone number to call. So I'm wondering if if we could kind of, I know we're having a broad resolution, but if we might just dip into the nitty gritty a little bit and maybe just kind of describe what those very specific things might look like if we start to, you know, fix this problem or fix or or address this issue, let's say.
I'll chime in a little bit here. Um, and I'll just speak on on gaps that I've experienced as a survivor. Um one of the things that I could have used, and this is just in all honesty, is childcare. We have the um Crisis Nursery that helps with children six and under. That does not help me with all of my children. Um, in the middle of my trauma, it would have helped me just to be able to take my kids to somewhere safe. So that is one thing that I think is a need as far as uh support services. Another thing that I could have probably benefited from is a safe place to stay, even if that is just for a night. Um, oftentimes in domestic violence relationships, abusive relationships, it 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 doesn't just happen one time. And after the one time, it's it it more than likely the victim and the perpetrator will be back together. Um, that's the sad unfortunate truth. Uh, and so having sometimes just another or additional place to go as a hideout, because oftentimes my hideouts, he knew where I was going. And so there was no safe haven for me ever. And so also, too, what Clarissa noted, um some type of confidentiality or privacy. Um, when I completed documents for my order of protection or just temporary orders of protection, I had to list every place where I would possibly be so that he knew not to go there. And again, what sense is that going to, what what type of protection is that going to give me other than this piece of paper if he really wants to inflict her, you know, violence on me? And so I think, you know, just additional support services, just those simple three things could just be a start. Um, and 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 again, just helping victim survivors, so.
Um, I mean, to me, there are two sides to this, right? That there is uh, the infrastructure needs to exist, like organizationally and um in terms of like physical spaces, right? And so like Rita mentioned, that includes like a safe space for childcare, um, you know, a a place that people can go to confidentially, where they can have a sanctuary. That's that's really how I would call it, is like we need sanctuaries. Um, and they can't just like, they can't really be a centralized, like one place sort of thing. Um, and then the other side of it is that also like support requires labor. And we're talking emotional labor, but we're also talking literal physical labor. You know, um, oftentimes it does require like somebody to physically step in the way, like between two people to prevent violence from taking place, someone being willing to take that risk. So, you know, that could be something like some organizational function of the city, or it could be, you know, something like uh block grants to already existing organizations which provide these sorts of services. One of the first things that I would look at is you know, I know that Courage Connection is struggling for money. Um, just the, what was this, two years ago, they had to shut down their storefront location that they use to raise revenue to provide services because, you know, they weren't able to maintain the rent on the space. So, you know, I think something like a block block grant similar to what the city has now thankfully provided to first followers would be very useful to an organization like Courage Connection. And we need to be willing to put up as much money as it takes. As long as there is still a need remaining, you know, we need to be able to put the resources towards in, you know, reducing that need. Um, and so, you know, the exact details, I don't know, honestly, but we need people that, you know, people in abusive situations know that they can trust um to respond uh as well as, you know, the physical space and um, you know, people-oriented infrastructure to keep, you know, an organized system in place that can effectively respond. Um, and again, it has to be, as everyone has said, it has to come from a place of compassion, understanding. Um, and, you know, a trauma-informed understanding.
I'm gonna add that, yeah, I like the idea of a separate phone number and a completely separate response team. I think that that would make a lot more people inclined to call, because remember, too, that's the thing, is that a lot of the instances of domestic violence go unreported. Um, and definitely to the police, but also to family members and medical professionals. And so I think having a whole separate um call line and response team would be great. And maybe in person, a response team that's made up of a social worker or community activist or mentor and EMT, um, not police, only maybe called if absolutely necessary, which is only five percent of the calls where they, you know, have a use of force that may not even be needed. So I think a lot of these times, you know, we don't uh need them. We have other response teams. And I think long-term services are also important um to prevent the incidents from happening again, like counseling and other services, resources, housing. Um, and then also I think community support, like maybe having support groups or group counseling, um, kind of ways that people can have a shared experience and support each other with that kind of mutual aid and all that.
Um, I do also wanna say that um I was reading a comment from uh Rita, and I do believe in that we must focus on also intersectionality. Um, as black women will experience domestic violence differently from from other other counterparts, it's just their white counterparts, cuz they will face racism and sexism. Uh, they'll be asked more questions probably as if they are fabricating a story as opposed to being looked at as a victim or someone in needing in help. Um, so we also need to also take that into consideration, too, and we're also um acknowledging domestic violence. Anyone else? Uh, Andy, you wanna share about anything? Clarissa, Megan, anyone else?
I mean, I just really, I think it's good that so many people from different perspectives wanna have the conversation, because often too many times, people who don't understand. And I think that, you know, Chris and Colin have, you know, first were the first people who said they didn't, you know, know much, but they contributed a lot. And so I feel like, you know, that's the kind of conversations that need to be in spaces, because as to Grace's point, we're never gonna be able to really bring people and parade them around and say, hey, give me your experiences, right? But, you know, if we can really make it a priority to um to get there to be spaces for women and their children. Um, but I think one of the things that concern me is that a lot of help for women and But I think one of the things that concern me is that a lot of help for women in domestic violence. Um, or even men, if you don't have children. There's not much for you. And I think that we don't talk about the, the young people. Who maybe are in a relationship and they don't have children. There's not really much help for you, you know, for that. So that I would love to know more about how we can help, you know, especially young people. I think I have a niece that's nineteen and she lives with her boyfriend, right? So, um, and that's pretty young and she doesn't have children. And so, you know, I think about those people who fall through the cracks. I think about men. I think about men who move out of town and come to be with women and then are, you know, left in another community. That happens. And so I think, you know, those types of experiences um, are important. And so just kind of, no one is immune to domestic violence. And I feel like, you know, trying to make it be ver- a certain situation, um, I've seen domestic violence with parents. Um, I had a mother who was addicted to drugs and, um, you know. One of the things that happened to me when I came into politics was someone put out that I had an order protection against my mother. But not understanding that I had a history of, you know, you don't know how you're dealing with someone who's dealing with an addiction. And so. You know, while bringing that up, that was re-traumatizing, but at the same time, it was good for me to be able to say, it's okay to seek help, right? It's okay to say you cannot do this to me, even if you're family, even if you're my mother, y- you know, and so people have so many experiences. I get calls from constituents who are living with an elderly parent who don't want to be there anymore, but they have nowhere to go. And so it's just things like that, like domestic violence comes in other forms. And, you know, um, some people don't realize that the alcoholic dad they had growing up, that's domestic violence. You don't realize it. Because I think to Meg's point, no one, no one teaches you those, they, they don't, you know, we talk about abstinence, right? But we don't talk about if these things are going on in your home, you know. It's okay to reach out and get help. And so I feel like, you know, when we teach kids young that it's okay to seek help. I think from there it'll become gradual, but I think it's hard to tell adults. I think it's really hard to tell adults that they're in a safe space and that they can seek help, especially for men. And so if you are a domestic violence survivor and you're a man, I don't know where that space would be for you. So, you know, that's all I want to say, really. Thank you.
I mean, I would also want to kind of add to that, that, you know, sometimes it's not just about saying, you know. Um, it's okay to ask for help, but, you know, this is experienced not so much from like. Domestic violence perspective, but in general that the, the idea of like, you know, oh, you can always ask me for anything you need. Oftentimes and someone's in a difficult or, or traumatizing situation, they won't necessarily know. Exactly what it is that they need in a moment, in the moment. So, you know, I think an important part moving forward will be as we identify critical pieces of support infrastructure that we need to develop. That we're clear about explicitly and specifically identifying, like, you know. What these resources are so that we're not just saying, feel free to reach out for help, but to be able to say specifically. You know, we can do X, Y, Z for you. If you can think of anything else. You know, ask us sort of approach, but like being able to come with direct concrete like. And calmly too, like that's super important to be able to, to like offer solutions. When, when people need them that are appropriate to their situation.
Anyone else before we prepare to close it out?
Just wondering if we already mentioned, or you plan to some of the resources that we have for people? And just also encouraging anyone else listening to share your ideas with, if you have any candidate that's your representative or. Other spaces that people have influence in, um, to share your thoughts as well.
I want to answer the question we got in the comments. Um, I'm not with Urbana schools, but I think the point about. DCFS intervention being more harmful than helpful is a really good point. Whether we talk about it as a panel. This comment is really vital to talking about women and children and domestic violence.
Anyone else want to give their thoughts on this, on this question?
As a, as a survivor, I've dealt with this, where my perpetrator used the DCFS. Um, as a result of retaliation against me. And again, the, uh, the trauma and the abuse that my children have had to experience. From having this strange white man asking leading questions in our home on whether or not they felt safe. So I'm not um, an Urbana parent, but I think this is a great question. It, and the question is, as an educator, I would be interested in hearing the specific ways you all plan to approach working with Urbana schools. Especially with staff that worked, that work directly with students and know them best. To work together to prevent domestic violence and support children who experience it. Especially consider, considering SROs, UPD, DCFS, et cetera. Intervention is often more harmful than helpful.
Um, I will say this before we prepare to close out. As a second year employee and educator for the Urbana School District. I'm in my second year of teaching at King School. I will say that for me personally, when I work with families who are going through these various traumas and even coming from various traumas myself. Um, living in different households, I will say that most of the times, these situations aren't prepared to benefit us. They're prepared to separate us as by pushing in these, these matters of SROs, UPD, DCFS. They're coming in to interrogate and they think that they're intervening, that they're intervening in the situation where actually they're separating the children from the parents. They're breaking up the family dynamics. They're doing nothing different than what we see in our economics. I'm just being honest. So until we start bringing in ac- actually family activists and family advocacy people, people who actually are supporting of the family. And then we won't have any change in these systems, especially being educated in this school district. I see firsthand how specialists, quote unquote, that don't look like myself or the demographic. Observe and look over and hover over these black and brown children and then make decisions or assumptions. Based upon their family dynamic, which then depends on the, the, uh, the judgment or stereotyping of, of their look or their dress. Or their, other socioeconomic uh, status in, in the situation. So that's also nothing we have to take into account. When advising to work with certain schools and school districts is that also in these school districts. We also have to uproot these certain individuals who are also perpetuating the situations that also keeping these families in these certain dynamics and keep them disenfranchised.
I mean, if I can add on, um, something to, uh, to this. Basically like, I think Grace kind of covered it uh, quite a bit earlier in the conversation when talking about. You know, um. Having a, a class or like education on like, what do healthy relationships look like? What do unhealthy relationships look like? And communicating like, you know, I was never taught in school, for example, like what boundaries are or how to set them. You know, it wasn't until uh, I went to U of I that we had any discussion on. Like what consent really is. And even that was kind of a, a half-hearted like, oh, well, we have to do this. Because, you know, there was some lawsuits, whatever, sort of like, so they could check a box. But the thing is like, these topics on how relationships should work in a mutually beneficial way. Is at best treated as an afterthought. Where I think that this does need to be a core element of, you know, like, this goes honestly all the way back to like kindergarten, right? And like the same time that we're teaching, you know, it's like, you know, sharing is caring and like be nice to each other. We also need to be teaching like what boundaries are and, you know, how they should be respected. That you should always stand up, you know, for yourself, defend the boundaries that you set. And make sure that you honor the boundaries that others set, right? And that's, that it's a really difficult thing for us to do because we, as a society, just have not talked about this really ever. But one of the first things is really understanding what boundaries are and how to respect them, right? And, you know, that's just one thing among many, boundaries, consent. Mutual respect, self-determination, autonomy, like all of these concepts are absolutely critical to understanding interpersonal relationships.
On a little bit of a lighter note, can we stop telling young children that if a boy or girl hits you or is mean to you, they like you? Because I swear that that um, feeds and that you grow up and you chase people who are mean to you because. There's this stigma, oh, if she hit you at recess, so I know that's ridiculous, but on a lighter note, I wanted to say that. A lot of, when he brought up kindergarten, I thought, man, how many people are taught that when you're young, right? That there's this resistance. That means that there's some type of love, right?
Absolutely. And in the media and stuff as well, all over the place. And uh, I would just also add off of Colin's comment about the question about in schools. I do think that education is key on that individual level, but then also on a bigger level, um, like on for families, having, you know, parenting classes. And early childhood education that involves parents and children, family counseling. And redistributing resources, how it all ties in together. If we had more social workers and nurses in schools instead of SROs. That might help to really address some of the issues in a more effective and compassionate way. And also having more resources for housing and things, so that some of these children might not need to stay in this unhealthy environment. Cause it might be that their one parent is, you know, trapped with a partner or something. So I think having all those systemic community resources can really help to prevent it at the core.
Any final thoughts?
I'd like to tell Julia, the person that asked the educator question, that um. If I ended up on city council, I would work to get rid of the SROs and use that three hundred thousand dollars. For better resources, like educating kids on abuse and interpersonal trauma and all that stuff. So just, you know, electing people that, um. You know, prioritize better solutions. Yeah, and then. Some. Chris asked, um, what can people do in a private or public capacity to help? Involved in politics, that might be a good way to end it, if anybody wants to answer that. What can people do in a public or private capacity to help uh, domestic violence survivors? I would say just listen to conversations like this and try to um. Upend some of those long-held beliefs that you've had, like that all victims are vic- you know, are all, you know. People that have to be victimized in a certain way to receive help. And that all perpetrators are bad people that need to go to jail. I think that we need to upend those thoughts. And that's, it's a, a good place to start, but that's my only comment for now.
Yeah, I think educating oneself and um, acknowledging things when it does happen, you know, and taking it seriously. If someone does disclose an incident of domestic violence and not having doubt and judgment and um, helping. You know, to the, the, making sure that people get the help and the resources that they need. Um, and then just general education and awareness and openness about relationships and resources. And yeah, I agree. I think that that openness and bringing down the stigma and the silencing is a really big barrier we have.
I think one very simple uh, thing that everyone can do is just every now and then. You know, self-reflect. Be willing to acknowledge shortcomings like in yourself. To, you know, to learn how to appropriately accept and give criticism. To recognize patterns of behavior uh, at any point that they're brought up. You, you know, the thing is, it's, it's so easy without even really thinking to gaslight someone. For example, like these. You know, you might call them like less serious instances of like inappropriate interpersonal behavior. But they still matter, right? And like the bigger instances are made up of smaller instances. So, you know, being able to recognize, you know, thought patterns, behavioral patterns in yourself. And to be willing to learn and grow and, and to develop past them is really the first step. You know, is that like, you have to be able to have that like honesty with yourself before you can help anyone else. And, yeah, so I would say like that plus everything that uh, Meg and Grace have already said.
I agree with what everyone else said here and um, I'll just add really quick too, to just remember that. Domestic violence doesn't discriminate and it could be any one story at any time.
I want to make sure that uh, with this conversation that we understand the severity of it and how serious it is. How everyone, you ought to use your resources in the community, such as Courage Connection, uh, such as the uh, the YWCA. And um, other resources that are dedicated to uh, helping uh, domestic survivors, domestic abuse survivors. Um, also with that being said, we must also establish areas for, for other demographics that are also suffering from domestic violence. As we just said, domestic violence does not mean just one person, one demographic. It goes across our boards as well. So we want to be mindful of that as well, because everyone's experience is not the same. So we have to be mindful when we're asserting situations or asserting certain, um, certain things that we think that would help people. We have to make sure we meet them first and find out what helps them best in their situation. With that being said, we're preparing to close it out. Anyone else have to say any final words or final thoughts uh, to your, to your constituents? Or to your people of Urbana or Champaign or your wards before we close out in our final series?
Just a few words of thanks to Ellen, to Justin, to Rita, to Meg, to literally everyone on this panel. For making this possible, for putting this venue together. You know, this is the last in our series of People's Council events. And, you know, I want to show some, some gratitude to everyone I'm, I'm sharing the screen with. I think that we have a fantastic opportunity in front of us and, you know. Any one of us here, every one of us here who wins. You know, their, their seats on, uh, you know, in their respective jurisdictions would be a victory for the people of Urbana. So thank you to the People's Mayor of Champaign-Urbana. To the one-man machine behind so many projects, Ellen. For making all this possible. Uh, and thank you to everyone who attended tonight. Make sure to turn out to vote if you haven't already, uh, February twenty-third for the Democratic primary. And April sixth for the general consolidated election, um, for both Champaign and Urbana.
Can I just note one thing to all of our uh, viewers? We have Colin Dodson and Chris Hansen who are both running for city council ward two in Urbana. And this is what friendly, progressive candidates look like. And I want to thank you guys both for volunteering your time to join this panel discussion. Because it really shows that we can work together and even you commending that anybody here. We are for the people and I think that people's first policy is what the people want and what our city needs. And so I'm just thankful to have both, everyone here, of course, but specifically I wanted to highlight you two. Because you guys are coming from the same ward and fighting for that spot, but this, it's all friendly competition, right? And it's all for the people. It's not self-gaining. It's not self-interest. It's truly for the people. And so I applaud you both for being here and demonstrating what healthy political, I guess, fighting. I don't, I have to be, you know, I have to tread lightly with my words, but what it looks like. So thank you guys.
I just want to shout out Colin and Chris because you guys show that candidates can be on the same platform and can still. You both kicked butt, you both talked well, you both spoke well, you both represented yourselves well. But thank you for showing us all that it doesn't matter what the platform is, everybody can be there and everybody can speak. So big ups to both of y'all, because y'all are both more mature than I'll ever be.
Great. Yes, and vote, the plug to vote before Tuesday. Yeah, but the everyone. Can vote for one of us.
You can vote, you can vote Hanson in the primary, but make sure to vote for Colin in the general.
I believe Grace wanted to say something.
Oh no, I was just gonna say that everybody in Champaign-Urbana is, you know, can vote for at least one of us, well, no matter where you live, what ward. So if you liked what, you know, you heard tonight and in the series, be sure to vote and tell your friends and family and community. Cause there's somebody on here that everybody can vote for in Champaign-Urbana somewhere.
Thanks y'all and good night.
All right. So as a parent to close out, I just want to tell everyone that what you see before you is a representation. What you see before you is a representation of work that has been done in the streets, which you see before is a representation of people-first policy. What you see before you is, is people of different demographics, different backgrounds coming together for a cause, and that is for the betterment of humanity. If you can imagine what we do without being in the seats, imagine what happens when we are in the seats. So I just want to leave you all with that and let you let you somber on that, let that marinate in the brain tonight. And it prepare you all for our election season starting next week on the twenty-third, when you start voting for people such as Rita Connerly. Megan McDonald, Colin Dodson, Christopher Hansen, Grace Wilkin, Andy Ma. And then before we have Clarissa Nickerson-Forman and myself and many others. I want to give a shout out to Deborah Lou, who's not with us today, also Jared Miller, we hope you feel better, hang in there. With that being said, I'm Justin Michael Hendricks, I'm the People's Mayor, yourself of Champaign-Urbana. I want to thank the organizations who have helped to principal and host and support this event. That includes the Central Illinois News, the U I U C Young Democratic Socials of America, and the Champaign County Anti-Racist Coalition. I want to make sure everybody stays well, be safe, make sure you register to vote, make sure you go and vote, whether by mail or by foot. Contact your people, because I do know there are candidates who are willing to give their time to travel. And make sure that you have transportation to and from your voting places. Make sure you contact your circuit clerk and all the information that you need for voting to appear yourself, to make sure that we have a people's first approach in these seats. With that being said, have a good night, everybody. Take care.